Just in time, Peter, we're just getting ready to start the special meeting.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this special board meeting. I apologize for being late, the turnpike wasn't very kind tonight. We'll start with the call to order and a pledge to be black. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Who's going to do the role tonight? Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
Mr. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Deming? Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Vergomo?
Here.
Mr. Sarnes?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Yardley?
Here.
Dr. Yarne?
Here.
Thank you. Questions and comments from guests? Name and municipality? Seeing no one rushing the podium, we'll move on to the committee reports. The first one is facilities, Mr. Casper. Mr. Casper is...
Thank you.
You've moved.
I'm moving further to the right.
Okay. Whatever you said.
Okay, there are one motion tonight to approve the development agreements for East Rockhill for the Hellman Field project. Anybody have any questions about those?
Let's... You're making the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm making a motion.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, moved by Mr. Casper and seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve the development agreements with East Rockhill Township. Now, comments or questions from board members?
Could you briefly describe what this is again?
These are the terms and conditions that we are required to abide by to do Phase Two of Hellman Field. Do you have anything to add?
This is something that we should have done on our last meeting, but for some reason we didn't. So I think we just gotta get... No.
Okay, any other comments or questions for board members?
Did we do something similar for Phase One?
Oh, yes. Anytime that we do this type of project, the township or municipality imposes to some extent certain terms and conditions, things like the number of parking spaces, the type of parking spaces, whether we landscape, you know, where we landscape, lots of things of that nature. Not to mention the conservation district. They obviously have to have the approval from the Bucks County Conservation District as well. Anyone else? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, eight? Eight, zero. Thank you. Those who can't count. Personnel Committee, Mr. Deming is not with us tonight, so who is going to cover this? I'll make the motion, actually. I will move to approve the superintendent's personnel report dated May 4th, 2015. This came in SharePoint this afternoon. Blow out a second. Moved by Dr. Yarne, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the superintendent's personnel report. Comments or questions from board members? I will simply say, Dr. Radigan, I'm going to abstain on this motion. This arrived at 4:40 this afternoon. I was trying desperately to get out of the building and did not have time to read it, and since it comes on SharePoint, that's a particularly difficult venue for me at work. It tends to get blocked. So that's the reason for my abstention tonight. Anyone else care to comment?
It's just the one item on here that we're...
I had a question about it too, for the same reason. Is there some reason this has to happen at this meeting? Do we have to... What's the story with this with regard to the timing? Because I would have... It kinda came out of nowhere, class, man. No offense or anything, but...
No, it's understandable. This is a situation where we have somebody in people services who is on leave, and we've been short-staffed, and because of different deadlines we have and things that have to be exactly done, we had posted this position, and myself and Dr. Phillips did a second round of interviews just the other day. And since we were having this special board meeting tonight, we thought maybe we could get this person approved so that she could provide support to that office.
She's replacing someone?
Long-term stop, for a person who's out on leave.
So it's not an additional hire?
Correct, not an additional hire.
Thank you.
Can I ask, in the future, if this is done in the afternoon of a board meeting, could we have it emailed as well, put on SharePoint? Because that's a much easier thing, at least for me, to open, and I can print it or read it, whatever, as opposed to the problems of getting into the system.
Yeah, also, we can't get SharePoint on iPhones. They work on... It works on iPads, but not on iPhones. And I asked Mr. Torado about it, and he said that it hasn't been tested, and he's gonna look into it for the future, so...
It doesn't work on my iPad.
Or my iPad, either one.
It has to be on a... On a computer.
It's a stock.
So, yeah, right, so when things come late, if you don't have... If you're not at your computer, if you just have your portable device and you can't open it, then that makes that difficult.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An "aye" abstaining, so the motion carries seven, zero, one. Thank you. Any new business from board members? If not, I'll move to the announcements. The next regular school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 18th, 2015, at 7:30 in this room. An executive session will follow tonight's Finance Committee meeting for the purpose of Personnel Matters. Comments or questions from guests?
Hi, Claire Steinberg, East Rockhill Township. A question to Dr. Radigan's personnel. How long is she out before you put on for a hire of somebody now?
How long is the person?
I'm sorry, what is the question? How long has she been out, or how long was she going to be out?
How long has she been out before you decided to find a new rubber replacement?
It's a substitute.
Once we knew the person was extending their leave.
Okay, how long?
So the short-term leave initially, and then it extended through to June, end of June, I believe.
Okay, is it weeks, months?
Well, now it's a couple of months, for sure.
Now, it will be a couple of months. And after two days, she got put on tonight's agenda, but the van truck would wait for 18 months, can't get put on a special meeting tonight?
I think we already discussed it.
Yes. And I didn't hear anything about the janitorial contract, how is that coming?
If you mean ASBA, because it's not just the janitorial, is that what you're meaning?
Well...
The negotiations for the support staff? We're meeting tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
And a week from tomorrow night, so those negotiations continue.
Okay, cool.
Obviously, it isn't settled, we're working on it. Anyone else? If not, questions from the press? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move to the Finance Committee next. Thank you.
All right, well, it's called order of the Finance meeting. I didn't... Is there anyone that would like any public comment before we start the meeting on anything on the agenda? Okay, so we'll move to the first part, which is our normal contract approval review. So we have five items on for review tonight. First is Music Theater International, which is for Central Middle Schools' production contract for March 2016 musical. I believe it is some... Lion King Jim Carrey. Any questions on that? Okay. Next is... For Sweet Stevens, Cats and Wills, it's for legal services, consultation agreement for the upcoming year, $10,000, which I believe is the same as we've been paying for their services. Is everyone... Okay? Okay. The next is, actually, the next two are for extended school years. C is for the pathway school for a student. And then the second is the penalty in the school for the death for two students. So, any questions on those? I guess Mr. Phillips would be the one to talk to.
Could you stick up with Ted?
And then finally, the last one is for the purposely fired company number one. I'm assuming it's just to rent space for the high school AP testing?
Yes.
Okay, so it's to rent space for two different days, it looks like. $170,000. Looks like one was today, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, three days.
It's three days from yesterday. And one was today.
Any questions on that?
Why do we have space on some days and some days we don't? I mean, there's 10 days of AP testing.
I don't know the answer to that. I guess we'd have to find that out.
Can you repeat the question?
Have to find out, maybe it's just the nature of the tests that they give on those days. I'm not sure how it works. We'll get an answer.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Yeah, I guess I'd also mention, what... How is that... Is that the best environment that we can put the students in? For taking a high-stakes test?
Well, I understand, this is not the first year they've done this. It's the first year we've seen the contract, but apparently they have done this in the past at the fire hall. But I can ask Mr. Bona, representative...
They've also done it at the church, that's right. The church was right over there.
Yeah, I remember the church, yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, I'll just ask Mr. Bona.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is three settlement agreements for students. Once again, any questions on these would have to be go to Dr. Phillips. The third is our student activity account. Are these open or closed, or are we not, I didn't...
It's new club. It's a new club.
Can you turn your mic on, ma'am?
She said the first one is, the Earth Club is a new club? Okay, so that, yes, I see it's checked new, so that's the Earth Club. And then the second one is... North Middle Drama Club, and that is a renewal. So there's one new and one renewal. Any questions on any of those? Okay. Moving on. We have some bid RFP results to go over for Finance. The first...
Who's Kathy?
Okay, Kathy can go over it a second.
Yes, annually, we go out to bid for our assignment books. The elementary schools are still using assignment books. The paper assignment books, we will be looking for 1,913 assignment books. We received, we sent, we received three RFPs back from these, premier agendas. So low bid for $4,610.33. And 50 class from wall charts are included with the price of the wall charts from premier as well. The middle schools are still using the paper assignment books, and they also are looking for wall charts. So again, premier agendas come in, we've had three receipts back of information. 1,915 assignment books, 30 wall charts for, to cost $4,624.65. The high school has reduced the number of assignment books. They are asking for 800 assignment books this year. And in this case, again, three companies bid on these. Academic planners is the low bid for the high school, and that costs us $1,512.
I have a question about the high school planners. How will they be distributed? Are they just going to be given to the seniors, the students who don't have the computer?
I'll have to get that information from the high school. I don't know.
Right, and then why 800 if there's only... If there's fewer than 600 seniors?
Well, I would assume that they purchase some for incoming students and for those that might lose them, but I'll just ask Mr. Bona how she came up with the number.
And to whom will be distributed, right?
Okay, the other items that we went out to bid, this was the great parts bid for transportation. And if you'll notice on there, we had six vendors that actually provided bids. Those bids were distributed over all six vendors. And the total for Del Bow, $418.96. PennCom, $630, $854. Wolfington, and these are per bid items, so that's not total. $1,645.91. Burgies, $109.08. Uta Select, $1,405.92. And Beans, $173.24. And again, these are per items, and each item is listed per item, because we get those parts as needed. It is $109.08, thank you, that was for Burgies, that's okay. So any questions on those items that were selected for low bid? Okay, we then go to the engine and transmission parts, the number 16109. Again, we have six vendors. And we actually distributed something over all six vendors. Again, these are per unit prices, we went with low bid. Penn... PennCom. Received items totaling $3,073.20 each. Del Bow, $2,083.30 each. Wolfington, $29,135.67. Burgies, $12.55. BPW, $2,897.30. And Beans, $10,414.11. Any questions on those items that were selected for low bid? We then did a vehicle battery bid, 16-110. We had three vendors participate. Warehouse Battery, and one below bid, and this is per each item. We have Group 31 at $1,0488 with a core price of $12. And Group 34, $78DT at $7,990, and of course, $9. Got any questions on any of those items? Okay, we also go, we participate with Bucks County IU in their bid for new and recapped tires. We will be using Henice, Firestone. That total for new tires. And again, this is an estimated quantity for each one of these. So the total to Henice would be $17,396.24 for Firestone. We also are using Henice for tire recapping. And that total is $26,417.32. Any questions on those?
So that completes that, those items will be on the next board agenda for approval. So the last item tonight is to update everybody on the budget, where we stand.
I'm going to... Yes, I'm sorry, can I get it?
So it's not on here, so if you wanna, if anybody wants to blow out, they'll see it.
Okay, tonight's budget update, there's not a whole lot to this tonight, because we're gonna be basically updating our timeline. We've passed the preliminary budget back in February. Timeline moved on from January to March. And here we are in April. Tonight, we have not yet received from PDE our amount of state allocation for property tax reduction. Funds have been allocated, but we have not yet received our particular dollar amounts. What we have received, however, to the state is, on Friday, we received our new Homestead/Farmstead median assessed value. And this year, our median assessed value was $30,520, which is up slightly from last year. One of the things that we will need to be discussing is the fact that the preliminary, the proposed final budget will need to be passed on the 18th. There will be an additional item coming out prior to the 18th, the PDE 2028, that will revise these numbers. We are where we at, we're at last year, we had not yet made any changes to personnel. I think you heard Dr. Yarne say we will have an executive session this evening. Some of that will be discussing personnel. So I will be putting something up prior to the 18th for everyone to see in the PDE 2028 with any changes. This is the page I wanted to stay for this evening. Our median assessed property value, $30,520, at our current mileage rate, the taxes would be gross at $3,956.09. The Act One, 1.9% index maximum there would be $4,031.25, or $75.16 gross addition to the tax bill. The total referendum exception added to all that would be a total of $4.3152, or a total of $131.70 over and above what the homeowner paid this year. At this point, no decision has been made yet whether to take the referendum exception, so I continue to show this particular number for more purposes. I have made a change to this particular slide. As you know, we did heavy bond refinancing at the last board meeting, which, again, we had anticipated for $147,392, and we actually saved $304,354. So I did update the revised deficit to $4,554,444,000. The administration continues to meet and work with Dr. Radigan to reduce this deficit. And we do expect to bring a balanced budget to the board for a proposed final budget on May 18th for board approval, then it will sit for 30 days. And on June, I believe, 22nd, is our board meeting, the final budget would be passed. Board members, I know this is the first time you're seeing this, there's not a whole lot here new. If you had any questions regarding any of the changes. So this is where we are, as I said. We will continue to work to reduce this deficit down to a balanced budget. You know it is an academic education.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Johnson. As Kathy stated, you know, about 70-some percent of this budget is personnel, salaries, and benefits and all that. So we will have an executive session tonight to discuss some personnel issues with the budget. And then at the May 18th meeting, as Kathy said, hopefully we'll have a balanced budget with recommendations. we'll have a balanced budget with recommendations, so we'll go from there. We will have then a month to, once again, review that before the final vote is at the June meeting. So now, I guess, that's it for the agenda, so if there's any public comment, please step forward.
Diane Herring-Hill, Town Township. You just showed a $304,354 savings based on bond refinancing. I did, however, go through the bond spec that you posted on the website. Is that what you were showing as your net or gross after cost of issuance? Because according to the document, the cost of issuance was over $100,000. So is that $304,000 net or gross of actual net savings?
Gross.
So it's not real net savings, then? That's not really the number we're actually saving, because we spent $100,000 to save $300,000, which is a reasonable number, but I think you're not really dealing in real numbers if you're not actually showing your net savings. Secondly, I noticed here we're again doing student activity counts. We have now reached the end of the third fiscal quarter in this year, and I've yet to see once a statement regarding quarterly SAC accounts, and that's a state law, and it's part of our policy, and I've never seen a statement done yet on SAC accounts quarterly. And thirdly, I want to aligns with what Mrs. Yarnley said. I can only imagine the horror of the students sitting there having paid for a test, being sent to Park City Firehouse, and God forbid the fire alarm goes off and they just blew their AP test. We have 11 buildings, and we can't find a suitable place to put these students? That's in an educational institution? After they've worked as hard as they have, we've expensed the resources for the teachers to teach them, and I'm sorry, but forgive me, if I ever told my boss that the reason something is the way it is, is because that's the way we always did it, and it's the first time we're seeing the contract, but we knew it was always going on, they don't want to know when I was handing in my letter of resignation? That is abusive to these students, and to say nothing, I'm sorry, but I find it abusive to the public and to the board. This test happened today. You didn't even get a shot at saying anything.
Anybody else wish to comment? Okay, if not, then this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.